Let's begin. We were all present and accounted for, with the exception of Bill. Bill has a business trip out of state and will not be back until tomorrow morning. So we have five, so we have plenty. I would ask you to all please rise, face the flag, and join us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have no additions that anybody who has brought up? Jeff, you have no additions?
No.
I would ask for an approval of the agenda as shown.
I'll move to approve.
Brenda?
I'll second.
And Luke on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Schedule presenters. As part of Jeff's goals that were defined earlier, one of them happens to be discussion on budget and finance. I think if there's any kind of confusion for our constituency, it's how the budget operates and how money gets spent. So this is not a single stop for him. We will have more than one presentation. Jeff, since you're coordinating this, if people have questions, do we feel them at the end of your presentation?
Yeah. At the end of this, I'll ask if there's any questions and then kind of a next steps type of thing.
Okay. So you can take it over.
Fantastic. As Bob mentioned, this was part of my goals. Part of the conversations of this has come up, I guess, over the past couple of years because we've gone out for bonds and a lot of finance questions come up. And so therefore, we thought it would be a good idea to do some talks around school finance. I know it's something that all of you guys are sitting on the edge of your seats when you hear about, but it is a good learning, basic steps. We will not dive into the 40-page levy probably at any point, but if you are more than willing to sit down with me, I can walk you through the levy at any time that you want to. We can certainly do that. We are planning on starting off, when I say we, Josh and I, I will do most of the talking, but Joshua is here for a lot of technical help as well. But the idea is to start very broad and then narrow ourselves down as we go through these discussions. The hope is to do this quarterly for the year. If we feel that we need more presentations, we can certainly do this. But the idea is to kind of give you some background on how school finance works and then ask any questions at the end. And again, we're not going to go deep diving in the next meeting or two, but the further we get into this, it might trigger you, some of your questions that you have, or hopefully it starts making more and more sense to some of you. So as we go through this tonight, please write down your questions that you might have, or if you have one, you know, during the middle of it, just raise your hand and we'll do our best to do the, to give you an answer tonight. If we can't answer it tonight, we will certainly get back to you at the next meeting. At the end of this, if there isn't any more questions, and if you come up with questions maybe on topics, you know, we can certainly write those down as future ideas for presentations as well. And so just keep that in mind as we go through this. So the question always is, you know, where does our money come from and what are we expended on? So those are the two big things. It's kind of like, think of this in your own, as your own household budgets, but on a grander scale as we get through this. So where does our money come from? Revenue into the school is based on student population of the school district. Now, we can go down a very large rabbit hole just talking about student populations and how the state gauges that, based on ADMs, WADMs, which is the weighted average daily membership, ADMs are average daily membership. And I can sit here and alphabet, you know, alphabet soup you to death for the rest of the night on some of the student population stuff. But in the big picture, schools get their revenue from student population. There are two different types of student population dollars that we get. One is called state aid, which is based on a formula at the state that all schools get. It's basic state aid. Do you know, do you know the number off the top of your head? It's in like 7,000?
6863.
6863 per student is basic state aid that every school gets for their student population. Now, on top of that, there's going to be different local levies and other types of dollars that come in from the state and federal accounts, or not accounts, but state and federal dollars that we get that will add to that 6863. So with the local levy, this is board-approved and voter-approved type levies that also draw in money according to our levy sheet. There are three main areas that are part of the local levy. There is the operating levy, which is voter-approved. So roughly six years ago, roughly, the voters either re-approved or added to the local operating levy, which deals with just operating costs for the district. This levy obviously is above and beyond the state aid that we get for students, and that is all student population-based as well. Currently, our levy is at $500 per student.
Right.
Yeah, voter-approved, $500 levy per student. Another type of local levy is a bond. As some of you remember during my bond conversations, bonds are for building, levies are learning, operating levies are for learning. And so when you talk about bonds being for buildings and operating levies being for learning, operating levies are generally your day-to-day costs that are accumulated in school districts. Building bonds are for buildings, if you think of it from that standpoint. Those two items don't cross. We can't use building bond money for operating costs. We can use, but it's a very, very bad practice, we can use operating levies for buildings. Again, you're taking money out of the classroom for learning if you put it toward bonds, bond work, right? So generally, those two items should stay separated. Make sense? Local optional revenue. This is board-approved also, and Josh, I'm going to turn this over to you real quick to describe the two different scenarios, maybe a little bit of history on this.
The state in an effort, I guess, to maybe not have a state increase in taxes, pushed it towards local impact. So there are two different levies that are available to districts. $300 board-approved operating levy, which our district has had since they put that in place, as well as a $424 per pupil local optional revenue, which we also have in place. And to be honest with you, there is a district in the state that does not take both of those options. So combined between the operating levy, the board-approved, the 500, the local operational, the 300, and the 424, that's all additional revenue that comes into the school district up and above the state aid or state formula. I don't know where else would you like to?
Nope. I just wanted some background history on that. Well said. There are other kinds of board-approved options for levy. For example, parking lot levies, which don't get used very often. There's, oh, if a school district is sued, the district can levy the cost of being sued out to the taxpayers as well. Those aren't used very often, but they are available for school boards to gather more Other sorts of, or other sources of revenue outside of this, mainly the state-funded revenue is, one, from federal funds for things such as special ed, title grants, and for food service through the National School Lunch Program. We get dollars that come in into the food service program from there. There's also local revenue from fees that we charge students and families, donations that come in, and program services such as Cannon Kids and preschool all flow into our district budget, but not at such a rate as what the state provides. Federal funds, kind of a smaller portion obviously than state aid, as is the local revenues even smaller than the federal funds from that aspect. So here's the percentage breakdown of where our money comes from. And if I remember correctly, we took this from our information?
Yes, it'd be from last year's audit. We just went through a draft meeting with auditors. There's some slight adjustments, but not much. I think 52 for state and 20 for operating grants and six for charges for services. And that'll make sense because the prior audit would have not had as many charged services as we were in COVID times.
Right.
A little bit of adjustment, but not much from that change.
So 55% of our money comes in from state sources such as the general formula, which we talked about, and from state aid. 22% of our dollars come in from property taxes, which is the levy. 19% come in from operating grants and contributions such as federal, which we just discussed a few options, and other local and county sources. 4% are charges for services. And Josh, help me out here, the charges for services, that can be like, obviously, the fees and stuff like that, but did that include like facility rentals and things like that?
Yep. Facility rental, obviously, the largest one that we would charge for would be your daycare or Cannon Kids preschool, and then lunch revenue for food service program.
Okay. And then finally, less than 1% comes from capital grants and contributions and other various sources from within the district. So where do we have for expenditures and where does the money get expended to on a year-to-year basis? The big one is salaries and benefits. And we talk about all of our people that work within the district, 70% of our expenditures on the operating side come from salaries and benefits, and this is for all staff. Sites, buildings, and equipment is 14%. So sites, buildings, and equipment include things like capital dollars, LTFM, utilities, building maintenance, and operating costs.
LTFM?
Long-term facilities maintenance, and that's going to be another whole conversation that we'll get to at some point in these talks. But long-term facilities maintenance are dollars that are per pupil-based that each school district in the state gets from the state to help keep buildings up that are 15% comes from district and instructional support services such as teacher supplies, general supplies, and district support services. And then such things as leases and other fiscal and other fixed cost programs are less than 1% of expenditures on the entire budget. Big picture view, where does the money come from? How does it get expended? The next presentation in a couple months will deal with our operating funds breakdowns. We'll talk about the general fund, talk about food service, we'll talk about debt service, we'll talk about community ed funds, and a whole bunch of other things. Any ideas that popped into your head as of right now that you would want us to try to tie into a presentation either at the next one or the, in the future? Nobody jump all at the same time?
Are you talking about just from a financial standpoint?
Yeah.
And how often are you going to present?
We thought we'd do four for the year, but if we need to do more, we can certainly do more. Again, we could sit here for hours talking about school finance. And again, if anybody is, you know, brave enough to come in and sit down, we can go page by page through the levy. We can certainly do that and take a look at it. And that will really show you how it starts off with the student population and breaks everything down into the different funds by student population.
Someone had emailed me, and maybe you've got a copy as well, about the annual audit. It comes out about the same time every year, doesn't it?
Yeah. Roughly, it's due to MDE by December 30th. And we try to get it as soon as we can with being diligent and accurate as we can do with the information. A lot of the things won't come to us until mid-August or even end of August where items are being finalized, whether it be student counts or state revenues or the like. So it's really hard to put all together. The big picture to remember, and we try to be very detailed on it, is it's a snapshot of the financial position of the district at June 30th. So it's going to adjust from that, obviously, but we also want to be diligent and correct as we can in doing that. By state statute, December 30th would be when it's actually due.
And that's an interesting point that we probably should have included in this is, what is our fiscal year? And maybe that's, maybe something we can include next time is, you got July 1st through June 30th is our fiscal year. And so by the time you close that out completely, you have to go through July to get the billing cycle, and then you're looking into August, like Josh just talked about. And then MDE starts looking at student counts in October for districts, and obviously, students move in the district, students move out of the district throughout the year for various reasons. And so keeping track of that in our student management system is a big piece of it also through our MARS system.
Questions or comments? It's a good review. It's 101 for us, so we get started, and it's good, good for the community to hear this. Moving on, that is not an action item. So we have no student this time. We do have committee reports. Does anyone have any committee reports that they'd like to discuss? Brenda?
Just mentioned that this Saturday, October 14th, is the Poker Social for the foundation, and it's at Mill Street, starts at about 4:00, goes till 8:45. So don't get there at 9:00. Anyway, it should be a fun event, and Bob said he's going to, Jeff's going to be there for sure.
Jeff said you'll be there for sure. Okay, anyone else? Moving on, administrative board reports. I think your packet has, has comments from everyone. Would you, would you like to supplement? Jan, do you have, Jan, do you have anything?
I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. Tim?
Don't.
Everything's good? Community ed, we don't have our AD here this evening. Dave Peterson has attached his update as well for you to review. Superintendent's report.
Yeah, I have a report in there, and obviously with only one action item. It's not too long, but I do want to kind of go over the good things. I know with the last board meeting, things got a little sidetracked, and so I just want to bring people's focus back to the good things that were going on in the district that kind of got lost, I think, in that last board meeting. We did give a presentation on the MCA data, and a complete report of that is on file. The district is above state average in all of the reported categories. The new student representative, Nathan Brazero, reported on the student activities and happenings in the Cannon Falls School District. Congratulations to our National Merit Scholarship semifinalist, Lauren Ritz. Congratulations to Angel Zeng for being the recipient of the Gary Sanchez Scholarship for $10,000 from the Minnesota Twins. The Cannon Falls School District is participating in the direct admission pilot program, and there will be more information to follow on this. Cannon Falls Secondary was given the College Success Award from GreatSchools.org for the third straight year, which is a top 10% award for the nation. Cannon Falls School District received $100,000 donation from Gemini for the creation of a Makerspace lab. This lab will focus on robotics and drones, engineering, CNC fabrication, and digital communications. Some more good news that came up just after the board meeting last time. Our school did receive a $5,000 farm-to-school grant, and the following projects have been accomplished as part of that grant. Two of our high school girls did a project for credit in their ag class. They rented land from a local farmer who worked the land, planted and raised sweet corn, harvested it, husted it, and repurchased and served it to our students at lunch over, I think it was a couple weeks ago. I think a big hit across the spectrum, K through 12. We look forward to buying table grapes from another ag student, which is another product, project for credit at a future date. We have bought apples from a Twin Oaks Orchard for our apple crunch day, so there was more farm-to-school stuff. We bought turkey hot dogs from Ferndale Market to add to our lunch menus, and we are purchasing potatoes and onions for our student meals from rotational roots. These are all local fresh foods that we're very proud to partner with. The next round of farm-to-school grants is being written now. We are hoping to receive another grant to continue this amazing program. So that's all I have.
Questions for Jeff? Okay, moving on. Public input. Comments are welcome from students, residents of the district, taxpayers of the district, people with children in the district, and employees of the district, and must relate to school business and not exceed five minutes. The board cannot engage in a discussion during the comment period, but will take the information and find answers if it is appropriate. Due to data privacy concerns, a speaker may not address criticism toward an individual district employee during public input. Individual complaints should be handled privately with building administrators and/or the superintendent. As part of board protocol, it is unacceptable for any speaker to slander or engage in character assassinations at a public board meeting. Does anyone wish to speak to the board about concerns within our school district? Mark?
I'm Mark Chilquist. This is my wife Cindy. And in light of recent events at prior board meetings, we would just like to offer up our thanks and support and appreciation to the staff here, the administration, and the school board. And we'd hope in the future there'd be less of these distractions so the board can continue to take care of the business at hand in a timely fashion. And they, along with all the staff here at Cannon Falls, continue striving to make this school the best place there is possible to get an education. And we would also like to acknowledge the great work of our students here at Cannon Falls in academics, the arts, and athletics. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the board? Dan?
I'm Dan Johnson, and I echo what Mark and Cindy just shared, to offer my thanks to the board for the incredible job that you do, and our thanks to the teachers, the staff, administration, and of course, all of our students. So thank you for the good work you do.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? We will close public input. Flipping the page, action items. We have no old business.
We have a follow-up to the last board meeting that I'd like to share.
We have a follow-up.
Yeah. So during the public comment period last time, there was a question about Jolynn Williams and her seating at the board table. And so we asked our legal counsel to provide an opinion regarding whether the requirements of Minnesota Statute 123B.09 subdivision 5B have been met with respect to the appointment of Jolynn Williams to the open school board position. The statute requires that an appointment be evidenced by a resolution entered into the minutes and that the appointment of the school board member be effective 30 days following adoption of the resolution. According to our counsel, each of these legal requirements were met. Our counsel stated that a resolution is the formal acknowledgement by the board requiring a motion and a vote. Here, there was a resolution because there was a formal acknowledgement by the board of appointment of Jolynn Williams after a motion and a vote on that motion. The results of that motion or resolution were then entered into minutes. Further, the appointment was specifically effective 30 days following adoption of the resolution. Not only was the language of the statute followed, the policy behind the statute was also met, as the public was given notice of the appointment through the publicly available minutes and had 30 days to file a petition to reject the appointment before the appointment became effective. No such challenge occurred, and Jolynn Williams was properly appointed to the school board on August 25th, 2022.
So in essence, that just reaffirms what action we took?
Yes.
Moving on, under new business, consideration to approve the event admission prices, $7 and $5 per student, that would be a buck increase.
Yes, the HVL is looking at starting price increases starting this winter, actually, and all the schools are taking this to their boards to vote. Most will increase starting this winter if their board approves it. There may be one or two that have to wait by whatever policies they have on their board until next year, but for consistency purposes, as families are going from event to event, we felt it necessary for all of us to act at the same time. And I do recommend that we pass this.
Is this, I know the HVL is doing, is this something that we feel we need to do to, as far as our finances go? Is this?
As the HVL, I think we need to look at this next year, quite honestly, just because of inflation over the past year that probably isn't going to go down anytime soon. The HVL is looking at trying to get closer to the section for section events as well. The HVL, they're not having money problems, but they're not, they're finding it hard to keep up because there was a school or two that left over the past year, which would be Triton and Kenyon, left the HVL, so.
Yeah, I would love to see it go the other way, especially for the students. I want, I want.
And we talked about that.
Yeah.
There are some, there are some schools that don't charge for their students, and that's separate from this issue. This is more, you know, if, if schools aren't charging for their students, then obviously we're not charging or we're not using the student price. But if visitors are coming in, are we charging their students? That would be the question, I guess, if we decide to go down that road.
Yeah. I think Cannon Falls students, you know, should, we should look at that differently, I think, and.
For home games, you mean?
Yeah. I mean, I think if we have more there, we're selling more products, we're having a better atmosphere, or hopefully morale is better.
So what I think HVL schools are doing, if they don't charge their own students, more than likely, they're charging our students to go there. And so when they have a general price like this, that's what it's meant. If their students are allowed to get in, if they have a student ID or something like that.
So it's not set in stone that we would have, even if we would pass this, that we would have to charge our own students?
Right.
You don't have to do it.
Right.
That's just the pricing you do if you, if you decide to.
Yep. Yep. And each school can, you know, the idea is to be consistent between schools in what they charge so that parents aren't going there saying, well, our school only charges this amount versus, you know, that amount. So it's more for the visitors coming in than it is for your own, your own people.
Reed, you're standing back there, out of bounds.
Out of, out of camera shot.
Could you, could you add any perspective to this? We're just discussing this.
The purpose again is to have, so we have some consistency with that to try to get closer to what section is charging at that 8.5, so we'd look to increase it to that 7.5, just to help Bob say, everything is going up, officials' costs, traveling, everything's going up, just to try to stay consistent with that. But again, we do have that local control of if we want to do that, when we want to do that.
And when would that conversation, when would we want to do that?
I think that starts when we look at redoing our fee schedule for the next fiscal year. And so usually that's.
Because most people have already purchased their, like, family passes and that kind of thing.
June timeframe. I mean, if you guys want to start having that discussion in the activities committee, I think that's appropriate. But it wouldn't take effect until next year.
To Katie's point, the family passes, is that going to have to change?
I think that, I think that's up for discussion.
Only if we address that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It won't affect this, yeah.
The passes wouldn't change for this, if that's what you're asking.
Yep.
And this money just comes back to us?
Yep.
Is that, okay.
Yep, they're just looking for consistency.
So do we currently charge our students at the door, or most families buy passes?
Most families buy passes, I would say, but we do charge our students currently. If they don't have a family pass or any other type of pass.
Yeah, I think, I'm fine with this as long as we have that conversation at some point.
Yeah.
That starts with your committee.
Yeah.
Okay. I would look for a motion to approve the event admission price increase as shown.
I'll make the motion.
Luke on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Any other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the event admission prices as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? We have two or three meetings like this every year, getting done that relatively early.
Yeah.
Good for you. So you can see what information items are coming up for our next board meeting, which is October 24th at 6:00 PM. Audit presentation, consideration to approve the 22, 23 seniority list, consideration to approve the winter coaching list. And anything else that you'd like to bring forward, you can contact Lori or Jeff to add that to the agenda if appropriate. Having said that, it looks like we're finished for the evening. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Luke on the motion?
I'll second.
Don't be shy. Katie on the second. Other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are finished. Thank you.